We've called the April 6th City Council Meeting to Order. Commissioner Smith, you give us the prayer pledge and fact of the day, please, sir.
I assume that through the prayer, my Father, Lord, you come once again to say thank you for the minute blessings we enjoy. Thank you for all your goodness and your kindness you continue to shine upon us. Thank you, Lord, for allowing us to be servants of you to serve this community in the difference in the lives of people. We ask your blessing, your guidance now as we continue to make decisions and affect the lives of all those in this city. We ask these blessings and pray for our very own city manager, Edward Bass, that you would touch his body from the crown, his head to the sole of his feet. Touch, Lord, as only you can. Heal him as only you can, if it's thy will, in thy Son, Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fact of the day. On April 6th, 1917, the United States entered World War I. After several years of Germany's senting, many merchant and passenger ships were lailing to the U.S. and Great Britain as part of Germany's unrestricted warfare in war zone waters. World War I began in 1914 and finally ended November 11th, 1918. More than 2 million American soldiers served in World War I, and about approximately 50,000 died on the battlefield. Fact of the day.
Okay. Minutes, any corrections to the minutes? If not, look for motion to approve.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen, second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now, next up, our ladies in green. Apopka Women's Club, I tell you, I, it's interesting, we go back, you know, having been born and raised in Apopka, I remember back when it was, gosh, when I was a kid, it was at the, was the old bowling alley, which was where, and I don't, I don't even know sure what's there now, what the business is, but on First and Washington. So, almost 60 years ago is where it was held for four or five years, I think, and be neat to get a couple pictures from those old days. As a matter of fact, I think my mom might even have a couple, but just, you know, for this being the 60th, that would be kind of a cool little where it's come from and where it is today. So, with that, we'll read this proclamation. Whereas the women, Apopka Women's Club was organized 65 years ago and has been instrumental in sponsoring the Apopka Art and Foliage Festival for many years. It's the city of Apopka's pleasure to be a part of the 60th Apopka Art and Foliage Festival 2022. And whereas the city of Apopka has long been known as the indoor foliage capital of the world, the Apopka Women's Club has expanded the foliage displays to attract a broader range of foliage enthusiasts, making the Apopka Art and Foliage Festival one of the premier festivals in central Florida. And whereas Kitlein Nelson Park is the site of the 2022 Apopka Art and Foliage Festival, providing a scenic and welcoming atmosphere for the thousands of visitors to the festival. And whereas the city council and the citizens of the city of Apopka want to recognize and commend the Apopka Women's Club for providing this family-oriented entertainment for our community. And whereas the city council invites all citizens to join the Apopka Women's Club in extending a warm welcome to the many visitors during the 2022 Apopka Art and Foliage Festival. Now therefore, I, Brian Nelson, Mayor of the City of Apopka, Florida, by virtue of the authority vested in me, City of Apopka, do hereby proclaim April 23rd and April 24th as Art and Foliage Festival Weekend. The City of Apopka, yeah. So who, who'd like to come up and give us the, what's going to be happening for the foliage files? Who's gonna? Jerry, Joanne? Give us the highlights for this year's festival.
First, we want to thank the city for all the support you've given us this year. It's been really, really great. One of the things that's not going to be happening at the fair, at the festival this year is the crazy hats. We're not going to have crazy hats this year. After 16 years, a woman who was chairman of it decided she needed a rest, so there won't be any crazy hats this year. We're going to have a children's zone, which we're trying to make that more, more things for the children to do. We're going to have entertainment. We're going to have some new concessionaires. We're having a vegan concession, concessionaire. We had a request for that last year because a lot of people don't eat meat. We're going to have a new, new group from Mount Dora, our wine and beer garden. They're going to be selling mimosas, too. But those of us in the green shirts can't have them while we're working, so. Anyway, I'm, in 1976, when the J.C.'s and the Women's Club decided that they would join together to have the Art and Foliage Festival, I don't think they want, knew how this would go on and on and on, how important this would become in the, in the city. So we're very pleased to have the festival this year, our 60th anniversary, and we're really, really happy.
Awesome. Thank you. Why don't we go ahead, let's go ahead and get a picture, everybody will meet down front, see if we can get everybody crowded into a picture of all the ladies. You bet, this is awesome. Yes, yes, yes.
Thank you so much. Thanks so much. I'll see ya.
All right. Our next presentation is an overview of the Public Safety Radio Improvements. Chief McKinley and Rich Steiner from Orange County Government are here to help us with that one.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. As the Mayor said, joining me is Rich Steiner with the Orange County Government in their Communications Section. He's going to give you the nuts and bolts of this improvement because if I tried to, I would make an exact disaster of it. But we have been awarded $490,000 from Urban Area Security Initiative funding. If you're not familiar with what that is, is it's federal money that comes to those areas of the country that might be subject to terrorist activity or something like that. And obviously with Walt Disney World, we receive money in the Orlando area. It goes through the Orange County Sheriff's Office. They have a committee that meets before we get the money, and that committee gets applications from police, fire, and other entities that need that money to harden things or whatever. We made a application with Rich's help and Rob Hippler's help. I don't want to leave him out either. His team's done an instrumental part in helping us with our radio system since they took it over almost, I think, three years ago. And it's finally come to fruition, and I'm going to turn it over to Rich and let him explain to you exactly what the improvements are going to do for the city of Apopka and also everybody, all public safety in Orange County.
Thank you. Hi, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to come out and talk to you today regarding the interlocal agreement. So during the third quarter of 2019, the Orange County staff and the City of Apopka staff started having meetings and discussions about combining our two independent radio systems. These conversations and meetings came about from recommendations from the 2019 Marjorie Stoneman Douglas Public Safety Commission Report from January 2019. Based on the after-action report from this commission and lessons learned from the events, it described the need for 911 centers to improve radio communications interoperability or the ability to share critical communications real time. It was mentioned in the report at the time the local municipalities operated poorly under independent radio communication systems. So around August 2020, Chief McKinley and I and his staff, we began an effort with the Domestic Security Task Force to secure the half a million dollars that the chief mentioned. And after lots of federal paperwork and a few presentations, we were successful. And these funds have now been released and are available for the City of Apopka to process the purchase order. So Orange County, the City of Orlando, and other cities within the county already combined systems back in 2013. Most recently, about six months ago, we signed a similar interlocal agreement with Reedy Creek Improvement District, and Reedy Creek has also combined systems about four months ago. Reedy Creek Improvement District operates five sites. The City of Orlando operates six, and Orange County operates 17 locations supporting radio communications for first responders and public safety. The largest mutual aid event demonstrating the success of a combined radio system was the unfortunate Pulse shooting events down, down Orlando. Last year, the state of Florida actually passed another statute mandating direct radio communications between 911 public safety answering points and first responders. Regardless of discipline, police, sheriff, fire communications personnel must be able to communicate from comm center to comm center, your 911 center, and the units in the field on their primary talk groups. So the City of Apopka is compliant with this, but this new shared system and solution will enable better interoperability for all the agencies involved. The City of Apopka owns and operates a two-tower solution, and the proposed interlocal agreement before you today will combine with the county's 17 locations. And what this means to the first responders and public safety is that the personnel will roam seamlessly from site to site, much like you do with your smartphone. There's no intervention on the public safety personnel's part. On the shared mutual aid talk groups that we have built out through the community, when there's a mass event, this extends to the City of Orlando's six locations in Reedy Creek. So once approved, the seamless system for all the 911 piece apps in Orange County will operate under one single radio communications platform for better and improved interoperability. That's really all I had today.
Any, any questions for Mr. Steiner or for Chief McKinley?
How soon will that begin? That shared?
That's up to Motorola. We're working with them. We are happy to say that Motorola, we got a quote from them two years ago, and they've stuck to their quote from two years ago. I do want to mention something else real quick on behalf of, again, the great working relationship we have with Orange County and our own IT department. This project started out at $800,000 with Motorola. We're down to 300, $485,000 with Motorola. A lot of that because our IT department is going to take some of the load, and Rich is offering his personnel to come over because every one of our radios and police and fire has got to be reprogrammed once we switch over to this system. So with Rich's help, Rob's help, we're able to reduce that to the amount that we got from UASI, because I'm not sure we would have gotten $800,000 from the UASI funds. So kudos to Rich, kudos to Rob for their assistance and, you know, their leverage of how important our public safety communication is. So that's, with their help, we're able to get this done. We've still got a long road ahead of us, but at least we're going to get there. So I want to thank Rich and Rob both.
Yeah, I just, I think the communication is key, and I know that there's been a working together, especially as we've had needs even in South Apopka and the crossover there, and being able to communicate, you know, like that, it's just another great step forward. So thank you.
I think it's an excellent idea, and technology is always great, and anytime we can improve it and work together with two different agencies, that's even better. So I applaud you for your efforts and thank you for your assistance.
No questions, and thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Rich. Appreciate all your help on that. Thank you, Chief. Okay. Gender view, I guess, Michael, anything that changes? I don't think.
No changes to the agenda.
All right. Public comment. Susan?
Good afternoon. I'm sure you've heard by now, my name is Gary McSwinney. I live on Spin Fisher Drive at, in Rock Springs Ridge. And last night, Rock Springs Ridge Homeowners Association held their annual meeting, and the results, I wanted to share with you personally, although I'm sure you've heard them by now, word travels fast. Both Michelle Chase and I were re-elected to the board. John Drago, the third member, his election is due next year. He's on the off-year of this year. David Marshall, who lives within, in Rock Springs Ridge, is a financial executive for an investment firm. He has also been elected to the board. And Bert Fairchild, who I believe you know very well, or long-term,
Yeah.
who has been a HOA president, vice president, and treasurer for about a decade in various capacities over at Sweetwater in, I believe, Seminole County. He will bring, and David Marshall will bring, a vast informative knowledge base of financial issues to our board. And in particular, Marshall, or Bert Fairchild will bring a lot of experience on the board itself. So we look forward to rolling into that scenario, starting next week when we go into our organizational meeting, and we will define which officer, who will be officers and what positions, and work forward with our goal of accomplishing acquisition of the golf course in due order. So there will be a change of faces, there will be changes, changes of management perhaps, attorneys as well. We're trying to put the best face we can forward to deal with the issues and avoid controversy almost on every level. So we have a solid board, and if you look at the petition drive we held a year and a half ago, two years ago now, that had over 2,200 signatures in favor of us proceeding ahead in this route. When you look at the membership vote that was held in October, that had an 82% approval of those voting for that, for us to secure ownership of the golf course, I think that's pretty clear, and I think we have a mandate from this vote that, from this election that also says, "We, the people of Rock Springs Ridge, support our effort to achieve the goals of acquiring the golf course." So we will be working with you, obviously, in the future. The golf group will be a part of this as well, and we look forward to a favorable outcome. And I know on, later today, you have the tortoise resolution, and I don't know what that will bring, but we'll be interested in hearing it. And I just want to say a personal thanks to Commissioner Becker for his outstanding service here, and he's been a delight to our community, and everybody speaks very favorable of him. So again, I want to just have a call out to you, best of luck in your future endeavors, and thank you for helping our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Was somebody else supposed to go? Because their comments are up on the screen. No? Okay. Well, they're up on the laptop, so. Okay. Hi, my name is Sue Moyer, and I live at 530 Sand Wedge Loop in Apopka. I live in Rock Springs Ridge. I just wanted to make a comment about the vote last night. It's truly unfortunate that we had 323 people in Rock Springs vote on our board when we have 300, or 1,320. So less, just under 1,000 people did not vote for our board, which is really kind of pitiful. And I also want to address how the mandate, which Gary just stated of 82%, was not 82% of the homes in Rock Springs Ridge. Only 53% of the homeowners actually voted in October. And so it was about 42% of the homes who voted in October, which they keep calling a mandate. I would like to continue to ask the city to enforce our PUD that we have for our Gopher Tortoise area, and I'm very glad that, or any of Rock Springs, so there's no building in Rock Springs at all, because their new deal is including putting 300 townhomes within Rock Springs Ridge on the Gopher Tortoise land. So I'm hoping that the city stays strong and does not allow for any new development in Rock Springs Ridge, including 300 townhomes on the Gopher Tortoise area. And I'm glad that we are looking at a resolution for Gopher Tortoise Day, which is coming up this week. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. As a citizen, it's my determination to bring love and prosperity to the city of Apopka and to everybody. One of the things I want to, one of the things I want to share with the, the council here, last city council meeting, after the meeting was over with, I approached the mayor, and I was reminding him, the day of the election, I went up and I shook his hand, I shook this campaigner's hand. And my words went to him and said, "Mayor, regardless of who win or lose, we all are one. Regardless of who win or lose, we all are one." The mayor stood up, looked at me, when he was already standing, he looked down over me, and he said, "Don't you ever question my character." Now, you don't really have to question people's character, they show you who their character is. But the thing that really bothered me was the way he looked at me, as if, as if I was a piece of garbage. I'm a man, I'm a citizen, and I'm a veteran, and I demand the same respect that you want for yourself, I, I demand it for me. Now let's, let's clear up something on this character issue. People show you their character. When you failed to acknowledge Black History Month for the whole month of February during both city council meeting, you showed me your character. When I came down, Commissioner Banksen, you can attest to this, I said, "Hey, look, we got a mayor who's leading the community, but failed to acknowledge Black History Month for the whole month." Your exact words, if I can quote, and you can correct me if I wrong, that's his can of worms, or that's his, that's his problem. I don't need to, I don't, you know, that's, that's not my problem. I was very taken back by that because you're a man of God.
I didn't say that.
Okay. Okay, if you didn't, if you didn't say it, one of us is not telling the truth. But that bothered me. That bothered me. Let me go here. Mayor, when I got this letter from your wife, that showed me your character. See how people show you their character? During the city commissioner's debate, this is you, that showed me your character. When Commissioner Velazquez won her seat, you didn't congratulate her, you congratulated Nick Nester, but you never congratulated her. During Women's Week, we have a beautiful woman right here, never acknowledged her accomplishment during Women's Week. That showed me your character. When I showed you this map of the city of Apopka, how everything is annexed around South Apopka like South Apopka is cancer, you showed me your character. When we had the annexation meeting, you did not open the meeting, you did not close the meeting, and I don't recall you saying anything, but here's a picture of you during that meeting. That showed me your character. When I brought to you about we, the people, and democracy about to vote, you won the election with 10% of the 35,000 registered votes we have here in the city of Apopka. That is a threat to our democracy all over this country. When the people in Ukraine are fighting a war, dying for democracy, and you don't have a grasp for that, that showed me your character. So Mayor, I say to you, principles matters, procedures matters, integrity matters, leadership matters, responsibility matters, accountability matters, morals matters, laws matters, ethics matters, and character matters.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
My name is David Hoffman. I live at Tayside Court, Rock Springs Ridge. Yesterday, Ukrainian, Ukrainian President Zelensky came down like a ton of bricks on the U.N. General Assembly for engaging in empty rhetoric rather than the powerful material action to support his beleaguered nation and people as they struggle to preserve democracy against unfathomable evil, unhinged totalitarian dictator Putin. Innocent citizens are being executed en masse for merely trying to protect their homes, their children, their families. By contrast, here in America, we witnessed large swathes of our population supporting a totalitarian wannabe, declaring that Vladimir Putin is a genius, a great leader, with vast expanses of the extremist media singing hosannas to both agents of evil. As Ukraine descends through its tragic grip of war, ascends, I should say, America descends in the grip of division and acrimony, engendered ironically by the two most dangerous threats to democracy worldwide. The theme here is democracy. I propose that Apopka City take a remarkable step to advance democracy in Ukraine and reassert, reassert democracy here in this city, such as it ever was, by passing an actionable resolution to support the suffering people of Ukraine, and by launching a fundraiser to send material to support to these inspirational fighters. Furthermore, I propose that a trademark- Furthermore, I propose that a trademark baseball cap, as baseball season is about to start, be created in Ukrainian blue with yellow letters S U N embroidered on the front, "Support Ukraine Now," accompanied by a replica of Ukrainian flag. The humanitarian action, this humanitarian action would signal a new commitment to democracy here at City Hall, serving as an inspirational vanguard effort that will be bound to gain national attention and honor for backing a trend line in Florida and the deep south, where democracy is under assault. Such an action will be concomitant with three successful at-bat hits for democracy at Rock Springs Ridge in the past year and a half, an impressive petition drive in October 2020, an overwhelming October 4, 2021 vote to sell the 51-acre preserve and provide funds for the purchase of the golf course, and the overwhelming approval last evening of a slate of HOA board candidates dedicated to the mission of saving and preserving Rock Springs Ridge, democracy on full display. Our citizens have spoken. Congratulations to Gary McSwain, MSL Chase, Bert Fairchild, and David Marshall, who promised to fulfill this goal. You folks at City Hall are invited to come up and learn from our Rock Springs Ridge Clinic on Democracy. You might like it.
Thank you. That it? Okay, under the consent item, we just have just the one item. It's just replacing a fire department squad truck motor blew up. For motion to approve the consent agenda?
I did have a question on that.
Sure. Chief, you want to come down real quick?
I was just curious, because it said that the motor blew up, but it was $20,000 to replace the motor, and that just seemed extensive. Is it because there's a specialty purpose in it, or is that just?
No, that's just the cost of replacing, we were not to fix the motor. The exact amount was $20,141.25.
I guess I'm remembering the old days when I flipped motors in my Mustang.
Any other questions? Chief, we only got them up here.
Yeah, I, you know, we lost an ambulance last week as well, so we've got a, and just so while you got, I got you up here, is what, 12 months lead time now for the ambulance that just, we just?
Yeah, this truck alone, F-150s, we were told is October of 2023 before we can purchase another one through the normal procurement process. Two 50s are November. The ambulance was going to be, we couldn't order one, we had to get in line, basically, with the intent-to-procure agreement, that we couldn't order until March of 2023, and it's 18 months from what order date we would actually receive the ambulance. So, we're really finding unique ways to get, get our jobs done.
Crazy. Any other questions for chief? Okay, not look for a motion to approve the one consent agenda item?
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, Bobby Howell. Acuria, is that how you say it?
Aquara Estates.
Aquaras, Aquara Estates, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, Commissioner. Bobby Howell, Planning Manager. Major development plan has been submitted for a residential subdivision consisting of 76 single-family units, developed in one phase. The property is located west of Jason Dwyer Parkway and adjacent to the Orchid Estates subdivision, and is zoned RSF-1B. Property rezoned approximately last summer to that RSF-1B designation. The applicant is proposing a minimum lot area of 9,750 square feet. Access is proposed via Tigress Drive. The internal streets will be dedicated to the public. Five-foot-wide sidewalks are provided on both sides of the internal streets. 155-foot-long right turn lane leading from Jason Dwyer Parkway to Tigress Drive is proposed as part of the site construction. Additionally, a 205-foot-long left turn lane leading from Jason Dwyer Parkway to Tigress Drive is proposed as part of the site construction as well. Two stormwater ponds are proposed and tracks that are owned and maintained by the Homeowners' Association. The applicant is proposing a totlot on track rec. 1 in addition to passive open space that is located on this tract. Tract is owned and maintained by the Homeowners' Association. The Development Review Committee recommends approval, the Planning Commission unanimously recommends approval, and the recommended motion this afternoon is to approve the Aquara Estates major development plan. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Questions for Bobby?
Yeah, where's the, so it's going to be one phase. Obviously, it shrouds Tigress Drive, and Tigress Drive is utilized by Orchid Estates currently. Is it going to be a simultaneous development? Are they going to do the north side first, then south side, or is it truly just going to be all done at once?
I couldn't let the applicant test that question. It's probably more for staging of construction and stuff.
Any other questions for Bobby before we bring up the applicant? Okay.
Good afternoon. Corey Sitler with McKinley Horn and Associates on the engineer record, 5107 Laval Drive, Orlando, Florida. We're still talking about whether the project, project is going to be one phase or two phases. If it is multiple phases, Tigress is likely going to be the, the, I guess, breakpoint between the two. I will say that Orchid Estates does have another entrance on the north side. That's probably the main entrance for southbound traffic. So, that's.
And then, I see where there's going to be a new turn lane into Tigress. Can that be done towards the, the front end of that project? Because already, if you, normal behaviors of people that live in Orchid Estates currently, you can tell that they're already going over that median structure.
Yeah, I can see the aerials.
Yeah. So, when are you planning on constructing that during the construction process?
I haven't been able to talk to the developer or home builder about that specifically. We're kind of still in the talks of if it even is going to be phased. So, if that's, if that's a preference of city council, you know, we can definitely talk to the developer and the home builder about that.
I, I think the ease of ingress egress would be, if we can prioritize it to be on the front end versus the tail end, I think that would be preferred. And the last question I had is, on the plan, especially the tree plan, it looks like you've got a lot of planting, almost what I would perceive to be in the right-of-way, the sidewalk between the sidewalk and the curb. Is that, am I looking at that correctly? Because, you know, I don't have to go too far, like pines of Wicava, it presents a whole slew of issues when you transplant trees in that, in that section of the development. So, is that accurate? Is that the plan? Because I would have encouraged not to do that.
Yeah, so currently, we're, we are showing street trees in between the sidewalk and the curb, and that was just to satisfy the city's street tree requirement. There's not really another place to put it in addition to the landscaping requirements in the lots.
Are those oaks? Because I can't, because on the circle, it almost looks on the legend that they're oaks, but.
Those won't be oaks.
Because, you know, obviously, because obviously with the root structure and stuff with the sidewalk and the road, you're going to run into problems.
Yeah, exactly. Our Land Development Code does not encourage oak trees for street trees, so there'll be a different variety that's more, less root aggressive.
I know Jean's got one coming up a little later, and we'll have her kind of, she can go into, kind of delve into the street trees, because we, we're doing a major kind of rewrite on street trees.
And this was, this was brought up with staff during the MDP phase, and they did comment, engineering, I believe, commented on it. We are going to, we are going to have root barriers on the trees so that there's not any, so that there's less impacts to sidewalk and curb infrastructure.
Okay. Thanks. Okay. All right. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing and look for a motion to approve the Aquara Estates major development plan. So moved. Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, Mid-Florida Logistics Lot 2.
This is a major development plan for a property located at 3101 Shelby Industrial Drive, which is Lot, Mid-Florida Logistics Park, Lot 2. Details the development of an industrial building totaling 138,500 square feet in area. Property is on 16.66 acres. Proposed use of the building is a laundry facility for Lowe's Hotels. Area on the east side of the building is set aside for future development and expansion of the building in case they need it. Total of 150 regular and truck parking spaces are provided on site. Stormwater is proposed to be discharged into the master stormwater pond for the Mid-Florida Logistics Park. Architectural elevation of the building is consistent with what's currently out in the park, and the DRC recommends approval. The Planning Commission unanimously recommends approval, and the recommended motion this afternoon is to approve the Lot 2 major development plan. Staff and applicant are here for questions.
Any questions for Bobby?
My only question is about water volume, obviously, with this being a laundry. We saw the challenges that we had when Inuvia came online and some of the issues that that presented. Have you all contemplated that and made sure that we have the capacity to be able to process whatever discharge that they have from the, from their operation?
Yes, sir. During the DRC review process, Public Services looked into all that and made the assumption there was enough water to handle the facility.
I don't think we have anybody from Public Services here, do we?
Made, made the assumption or confirmed?
They confirmed through their work that they do have, that studies were turned in to show the amount of water that was used on this facility.
I know this isn't under this purview, but is there any indication how many jobs that this is going to create?
Bruce, maybe applicant?
It's okay if you don't have. Any, any other questions for Bobby? If not, we'll have the applicant come forward, maybe try to answer that question for you.
Good afternoon. Honey, I U, 6800 Liquid Plaza Drive with Lowe's Hotels. So, this facility is going to do, as Bobby said, hotels linen as a commercial laundry, and it's going to do what presently open and also with future growth. At the beginning, we're looking at about 100 to 120 team members working, so that means it could go up to 200, 250 open positions to be able to maintain that number.
Excellent. Will that process be simply through Lowe's that people would go online to begin to pursue that?
That is correct. Yes.
Awesome. Okay. Any, any other questions?
Well, it was a good question about how many jobs it's going to bring, but I guess the thing we need, start addressing, how many residents of the City of Apopka is going to be employed?
As much as we can.
All right.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? If not, we'll close the public hearing. I, I do want to, yeah. I don't want to speak to this matter, but I will speak to another matter. Earlier, I stood up here, I proposed a resolution, be taken up by the city. There was no response whatsoever to what I said. Last week, Sue Moyer, or the last meeting, Sue Moyer came up here and proposed a resolution regarding the Tortoise Day here in Florida in April. You people are all over that like bees.
Can I have a point of order? This is not part of this particular piece of business. I would suggest that the speaker just cease the comment.
Okay, all right. The point is, there's no response to that, and I think that's wrong.
Point of order to the chair.
Okay. Okay. Well, before we close and vote on this, this motion, I do want to let everybody know that Bobby Howell is taking up a position with Lake County, is going to be the head of their planning department, and we, we wish him well. I mean, it's a, it's a great, you know, great advancement for him, and, and so we, we thank him for, what, six years? Almost six years of service, so thank you, Bobby, for, for what you've done to.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, it's been an honor to serve with you. I really enjoyed my time. I'll miss all of you.
Well, you'll be missed, for sure.
Yes, he will. I spoke to him yesterday.
Okay. With that, I look for a motion to approve the Mid-Florida Logistics Park Lot 2 major development plan.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, Chief McKinley. This is the accepted, I guess we just, just a formality, you want to? I mean, this is an action item versus a presentation.
Mayor, Commissioners, I apologize, because I actually meant to say it before I sat down the first time, but what we do need to, is for the, allow for y'all to accept the mayor to sign an agreement with Orange County to have them work with us on improving our radio system, and also with the Orange County Sheriff's Office to accept the $490,000 in UASI funds. So, it is an action item that needs to be voted on by y'all so that the mayor can sign those two agreements that were in the package.
Any questions for chief? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing and look for a motion to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with the Orange County Sheriff's Office to accept, receive urban area security initiative UASI funding and enter into an agreement with Orange County government to upgrade the city's public safety communications system.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez, second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, Pam, the local Florida Department of Transportation agreement.
Let me start by saying I'm not happy to be standing here having to talk to you about this. When I came in front of y'all September 9th of 2021, we were enthusiastic about this $30,000 agreement we had with DOT to, when they do the, the resurfacing project on 441 from Bradshaw to Central, we're going to continue the pattern sidewalks, and at Central, we were going to put the decorative crosswalk like we did at McGee, you know, in a, as we start beautifying downtown. DOT, as you'll recall, as part of that resurfacing, they're going to add medians for us. Other things that they're doing for us is adding conduit so that we can run electric and irrigation out for whatever kind of landscaping and lighting that we choose to do. Well, they did their cost estimates last summer, and when the cost estimates came in, this was the original cost estimate, and we got a, like a $12,000 discount because of the difference in the, the software that they use to make the estimate and what actual cost they were seeing for the, the stamped sidewalks. So, this is what the cost came in six or eight months later. The bidder that, that was awarded this contract to do these two things for us, it came in at $104,000, up from $45,000, and that's a lot of money. And so, our share of that went from $30,000 to 60, 61,000, 61,500, additional dollars to do the sidewalk and the crosswalk. And so, I have made this recommendation that we just do the sidewalks and ask DOT for, to give us, we've already paid them the $30,000, because that was required, and that's what it was going to cost us to do everything. It's your decision. If we decide to continue this, it will cost us, in addition to the $30,000 that we've paid, $61,500 additional. It's for y'all to decide, do you want to pay the difference and do everything, or should we go? We can, with DOT, we have the option to just cancel the agreement, or what I've recommended is we just, just do the sidewalks, because some of them are already done, and that would cost us about $26,000, and we would get $4,000 back. So, I'm.
Yeah, so she just basically got, if you see in your, your staff report, you got three options, and so she, I just told her, bring all three options, and she, she brings, bringing us three options. We do have money in the budget, we do have money in the department. I won't, obviously, it's going to take from something else that we might want to do, other sidewalks and other, you know, road improvements, but you can't take impact fee dollars, because this is not a, a road enhancement, it's just a road improvement.
So, it's, it has to come out of our operating budget, so. If I can just add to the, the resurfacing project, it went from $2 million to $3 million. So, it wasn't just us, I think ours disproportionately went up, but I, I can't say that for sure without seeing the rest of it. And DOT is still going to do that project for us. So, I guess my point is, it's not just us, it's everything, and it's, it's affecting everything I do right now, because I don't know if I have enough money for cost estimates I made last year when I go to construction this year. So, this is kind of the beginning, but we are going forward with the project, one way or another, just maybe not this part of it.
Can I get a point of clarity? The, what you had up there before, the sidewalks aren't. Can I get a point of clarity? The, what you had up there before, the sidewalks aren't pavers, though?
No.
So all the rest of them are stamped concrete?
Stamped concrete, architectural concrete. It's, the cost estimate is for whichever one was cheaper. They'll look just like the ones that are out there now. So this is not like an upgrade to what we already have.
And the, and the crosswalks down here are, in fact, stamped concrete. They're not brick?
The crosswalks? Are you talking about the sidewalks or the crosswalks?
Crosswalks.
The crosswalks, what we have already is stamped concrete.
I mean, me personally, it's my own opinion. I've never particularly cared for the pink sidewalks anyways. I'd prefer to have the crosswalks look more consistent.
Wait a minute. So you'd like to do what now? I'm sorry.
I, I think the crosswalks, I mean, the crosswalk at McGee looks a lot nicer than those pink kind of stamped concrete sidewalks. You know, aesthetically, what people are going to see the most as they're driving are going to see, and pedestrians, for that matter, when they cross over it, will be the crosswalks.
So you'd rather see us do the...
Crosswalks versus the sidewalks, assuming that the sidewalks are in good condition.
So if we just did the crosswalks and not the sidewalks, it would cost...
Additional 34,745.
Thank you. Yeah.
Because if, because ultimately, if you're trying to build some continuity into the aesthetics of our city, I mean, I don't want to sacrifice that just because, you know, it's got a money aspect to it. If that's the cost of doing it at this point, it's the cost of doing it. I just want to make sure that it looks the best possible. And again, my opinion is, I've never really liked the look of the sidewalks with that stamped concrete, with the pink. I'd rather have the crosswalk.
I mean, that's how my thoughts tended to lean because there's a uniformity, and it's bringing, it brings the, the, better word, the ambiance, the, you know, the level of the city up to a place where we're aiming at. I think that's something that if we don't do it now, it's going to be a lot more expensive if we ever did try and add it later. So even though it's a little bit of a bite of the budget, I think it's still less expensive than if we try to do it later. Otherwise, we have one street in town that does that. Here, it's kind of balancing bookends of our downtown area, and I think it, there's a uniformity that looks nice by doing it that way.
There are other options, too. You know, we could look around and see if we could find someone to do it cheaper. The original plan was just to let DOT do it. Economy of scale, it'd be cheaper. But I, right here, I can't say for certain that we could find someone to do it cheaper. Maybe we could, maybe we couldn't.
Do we have time to pursue that? I mean, that's always better as long as it's same quality.
Well, we would have to say no and then live with whatever our decisions. They've already bid this out. They're, they're going to be turning dirt in June.
We can, if it's under 50,000, then we could get three, three quotes, right? So we could, we could rush out there and try to get three quotes.
We also have, we are piggybacking on the Seminole County construction contract for projects less than 2 million. And they have contractors in there that do this kind of work, and I could thumb through those and see, you know, where those costs are locked in and see what it would cost to use someone else to do it. I did look at one contractor, and it came in a little lower than what it would cost to have, I think it's Hubbard is the one that won this bid, to have them do it. And honestly, if there's no economy of scale, if we're not getting a discount...
And is it going to be hard to coordinate, is it going to be hard to coordinate the DOT with that?
We would just have to do it after. We'd let them come in and do their stuff, and then we'd schedule ours to go in right after that.
So we'd just cut back the pavement out?
Just, yeah.
So the bid would show the additional expense of them having to do that so we can truly compare apples to apples?
No, we would just take it out of this agreement and then do ours.
But I mean, when we, we want to know ahead of time, if they're going to charge us the same amount, but then they're going to charge us extra to cut it out and relay it, then that's going to end up being more expensive and...
Right. But what I'm saying to you is, I did go through the Seminole County contract, and I found one of the contractors that could do it a little bit less than this one.
I think it's, I think if it's not a lot less, I think you're going to be...
Yeah, because if you're not talking about a lot less, when you pay to have them to come back and undo what the state's already done, now we're going to be in excess of what we'd originally done. And by doing that, are we going to delay the project?
No, we're not going to delay. DOT will not allow us to delay that.
All right. So then is in our best interest then to go ahead and do the crosswalks?
The, the crosswalks, they don't tear up the road. They place them on top. When they did McGee, they had resurfaced the road, and then they came in and laid those, the stamped concrete on top. So it's got a little texture to it, but they didn't dig up the crosswalks. They put those in after they had resurfaced the road. They put them on top and then put the thermoplastic striping on top of it.
Right, but if we don't do it when they do it, they're not going to leave it open for us to come in later.
No, no. They'll resurface it, and then we'll just come in and do the striping and add those on top. There's no destruction, is what I'm saying. They'll, they'll resurface it, and they'll do the standard striping across box. That will have to be sandblasted off or scraped on.
Okay. Commissioner Velasquez, you have a question?
No, they've asked all the questions. So at this point, it's deciding to stay with what we have or to eliminate and go with, what you're saying, the piggyback over, piggyback at Seminole.
Well, that's, just for that.
Yeah, that would be separate. We would have to, I would have to recommend to you that you say let's, well, and assuming you don't want to do the sidewalks, too, that we would just void our contract with DOT and figure out some way to do this on our own. We'll get our $30,000 back and...
Well, it sounds like...
That's not the, that's not what I'm proposing. I'm proposing that we do not do the sidewalks, but allow them to go ahead and do the crosswalks, and we just pay the difference.
$34,000.
Yes.
And I've already talked to DOT about it, and we can modify this any way that we want.
Okay.
Okay. So we're not doing the sidewalks, but we're doing the crosswalks.
That's right. So this, what I have up there, I just put the thing on there that costs y'all the least amount of money because it's not my money to spend. So instead of this motion, it will be to keep in the pattern pavement crosswalks and remove the sidewalks from the agreement and pay an additional 34,000.
745.
Thank you. I found it faster than you.
For just the crosswalks.
Okay.
Just do the crosswalks.
Well, before we do that, let's, let's ask if anybody in the public wants to speak on this matter. Okay, nobody wants to speak. So, okay, so I'm looking for a motion. Mr. Becker, you want to kind of let us out with that?
Yeah, so move to go forward with the pattern pavement crosswalks instead of the sidewalk improvements.
Mm-hmm.
With the amount in question.
Okay, so got a motion by Commissioner Becker?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor? Aye. All opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Good afternoon. The item before you presently is staff's request for authorization to conduct negotiations with the property owner of the property located at 27 North Binion Road. Or more commonly, this is the property on the north shore of Shepherd Lake, a budding, budding camp Weewaw on the north side. At the present time, there is a draft agreement that is been completed for presentation to the property owner as the city's offer to purchase the property. At this point, we want to get the council's authorization to present that offer and begin negotiations for the purchase of the property. The current draft is that it is going to be offered at its appraised value. It's a standard purchase and sale agreement when it comes to real estate property. And the part is, it's similar to agreements that we have done, actually structurally and substantially, it's similar to the agreement done for the purchase of Camp Weewaw. The only difference is that we have included an environmental contingency in the contract which provides for three separate options in the event that the environmental audits and reports for the property show a level of environmental condition that may or may not be acceptable to the city. So at this time, the request is for authorization to proceed forward to negotiate for the purchase of the property. Not to actually purchase it, just to negotiate.
I'm sensitive to the word negotiate. I'm a little gun shy off the last RFP conversation. But what I do want to say, and again, I can respect the idea of negotiations, and then it'll come back, and this will be something that probably the person that sits in the seat after me will determine because I'm assuming that's going to be kind of a 30-day process. What I would, what I would encourage my successor to consider in this council is, do we have a picture of what the full cost of this acquisition and ownership will be long term? So, yeah, we're going to pay for it, but a general guidance of how much, if it is, the property is contaminated, how much money we're going to sink into that, and what the cost of, of any improvements that are planned for this piece of property once we acquire it, if we, if we do.
Well, one of the contingencies that is going to be presented to the property owner that is, in the event that this ends up being a property that qualifies for brownfields incentives in which there may be incentive of monies that'll be, that'll be provided by the state. One of the contingencies is that if the costs of the brownfield remediation exceeds the amount of the incentive, incentivized funding that we receive from the state, that actually the property owner is going to make up that difference, and that difference will be credited to the city as part of the purchase price. That's one of the contingencies. We have other contingencies where there is a unilateral right on the part of the city where if this is something that is just not going to work, then the, under the environmental contingency, the city can terminate the agreement, and the, the price of terminating the agreement will be the surrendering of the deposit to the, to the property owner. But it does give the city a unilateral right to get out of the agreement if it comes back and this is just completely untenable.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, you know, my only concern is, you know, when we first contemplated the purchase of Camp Weewaw, you know, we had a gentleman come in here several times and try and pitch this idea. We didn't take him up on that offer, and yet the market has appreciated in a manner this is going to be more costly than it would have probably been a year ago. And we've also got other capital concerns that we need. I mean, this is an $800,000 expenditure, 765 or 768 expenditure. When we got, you know, a couple meetings ago, we were, and this is, I'm looking at you, but this is really a conversation for the council. You know, $30 million in desired upgrades for our parks and rec space. You know, we've had a couple budget hearings past couple years where we've needed a fleet maintenance, million and a half dollar building. You know, there's a lot of capital needs in our city to be exploring kind of add-on land that serves really no purpose right now for the city, and it's going to take a lot for us to mitigate its current form to get it into a useful life. So I just, you know, I don't, I'm not trying to deter our next step forward in putting the piece of paper in front of the property owner. I just, you know, there's legitimate concerns about if we're going to spend $800,000 on something like this, we're taking it away from other areas. So...
Commissioner Smith?
Will we know about the contamination before the purchase?
Yes. Well, pursuant to the agreement, the property owner has to provide us with all environmental studies, environment reports as part of the contract. So we will know prior to the closing what the reports state, and then at that point, how we can address the environmental concerns, if any. Those are all laid out as part of the environmental contingency in the contract.
All right.
Yeah, I think that's healthy logic to look at that. My first question is, what is the purpose and benefit to the city? What are we looking at? Why would we do this? How does that outweigh the potential, we could put this money elsewhere thought? Because again, I agree, there's lots of things that we can and need to do. Obviously, there's a green space that's a value that we need to keep, and we have. I think we're, we're over in our amount of acreage that we need for that, but that puts us in a good spot concerning other development. But I know it was proposed or mentioned that it can be a use for the citizens here with Camp Weewaw when it's utilized by someone else coming in. This can be something our citizens can use consistently.
Year-round. Yeah, that, for me, I think that's the big, big advantage of having this piece of property is that, you know, it's a, there's a real small area between Camp Weewaw and this property that you could fence off. So if you have summer camps where you obviously have to have restricted access, which means our citizens can't use that property, it would give you access to Shepherd Lake, Lake Shepherd. And then when, when there weren't overnight campers, then you could open up that gate and go between Camp Weewaw and this piece of property. So I think, to me, that's, that's the advantage. I mean, it's, obviously, being next door to Camp Weewaw, there's that advantage as well. But, yeah, it's, it's a, that's the reason I, I think it's, it's appropriate to at least take a, you know, take a look at it and see if we can't figure out a way to buy it because obviously, it's, you know, they need to sell it. Now that it's into an estate, it's, so I think it's, the timing is right.
And again, it is appreciable land, and as it is appreciating, it, it should continue to do so. So that's still an asset to the city, so it's trading liquid funds for asset. You know, at that point, if we decided this really isn't beneficial for us, we need to utilize it elsewhere. How much of that is usable land? I know it's 20.126 acres.
No, I believe it's, I think it's 28.
I think it was eight. I want to say eight.
Well, I thought I had the square footage from the property appraisers. I can't, off the top of my head, I can't remember of the 20.56. I thought, yeah, it might be eight. It's less than, less than eight or not submerged.
The agriculture portion's 8.69 acres. There's a single family of an acre, and then submerged is 10.44. So you're looking at about nine and a half acres. It's all waterfront.
It's lakefront property, but I would just be curious to know, how did we arrive at this number? Is that consistent with...
The appraisal we got.
The acreage comes from the, from the, both the appraisal as well as the information that the property appraiser has.
So my question is that when this was presented much earlier, a spokesperson for the owner had said that earlier they had, they had a buyer for it. And somehow, the deal kind of fell through, and it was proposed as a residential. And so at this point, with us considering it a negotiation, now we're, we're keeping the owner of that property to kind of wait to decide, well, do we want it or we don't want it, when they may have an opportunity to, to sell their property? So what, how long is the process? And is the owner still interested in trying to sell it as privately rather than with the city? Because I, I haven't seen the owner here. I've only seen, you know, the spokesperson.
She's, she's not really, I don't think...
But we have, well, when it's time for, I mean, we do have Mr. Dennis New who has come up continuously and spoken for the owner. So at this point, before I can even agree to, let's negotiate, was, is she still interested in doing something other than selling it to us? Because how long is the process before we, with the environmental study and everything? I mean, how long are we asking her to hold on to that property?
Well, now you're, you're on two separate timeframes here. If, because you're, if we negotiate and a contract is signed, then timelines are governed by the contract. So the part of the property owner has agreed to execute the contract. So we're not holding up anything. The property owner has consented to entering into the contract and the timelines that are presented in the contract.
Okay.
So it is, at this point, is we're going to go forward to, because this is the city's action, I want the authorization of the council, that is, the desire of the council to present the contract and offer to the property owner to either accept it or deny it. That's, that's the property owner's prerogative. But I want the city's authorization to present that contract and that offer to the property owner for, to accept or to decline. Then once, if the property owner accepts the contract, now the contract is going to govern the timelines for when the reports need to be, when we need to submit. What are the timeframes where if the environmental reports don't, don't come in or don't drive, that, that either party is going to have the opportunity to terminate the contract as well as the other regular contingencies that are in a, in a purchase and sale agreement of this kind?
Okay, we've got the broker of the deal. You want to just have him come up?
Sure.
Commissioner Velasquez?
Yes, I'm Rick Gonzalez with Crosby and Associates. Yes, the owner would like...
Yes, the owner would like to discuss this with the city. We did have previous buyers look at the property, and personally think, and I think the highest and best use is a townhome community, but the city has expressed a, the planning department, I guess, informally said they didn't want townhomes there. So that went by the wayside, even though it's allowed under the code. So we're back to, and it is being advertised for sale, and so it is being offered to the public and it's being offered to the city.
Can we clarify that mark, remark?
Yeah.
What's staff's point of view on what you just said, because that's important for me.
The-
Well, it was my reading of the, what's allowed. It's got a future land use of office, which I think is sort of the wrong future land use, but that's the way it is. And under office, if you look at the matrix, townhomes are checked as allowable use.
Jim, you want to-
A developer went to the city and got the informal read that they didn't like that idea, so that's-
Jim, you want to- Sure, I can address that. The, it's a fairly compact property, basically entrance either, you know, probably off of, let's see here, off of Dun Cove Drive. It's a curve, it's also a curved entrance off of Benyon Road. But the project, the way it was presented, did not meet code. In other words, we do have that requirement about rear-loaded lots if they're less than 50 feet, and townhomes are obviously less than 50 feet, and all the other subdivisions that we've got are meeting code. So you have your main road, and then you have your back access drive where the, where the garages would be. And they didn't even come close to what, what we've been looking at for meeting our code.
So was the point of contention, the concept and layout, or was it the use of townhomes?
Concept and layout, but it also, if you look at the area, you, we also look at compatibility with the surrounding area. There are no other multifamily developments in that area.
It's all single-family.
Yeah, yeah. It doesn't, it doesn't match the consistency of the, of what you have in the area for the single-family development, and the park across the street, or across the lake.
Okay.
But, sorry, one last thing on there, I'll press a little bit further on that one. But at the staff level, the compatibility, is that something that staff has unilateral authority to determine? Because, you know, obviously, a lot of these areas were agricultural at one time, but yet the first single-family development that came in, it was the first one around a whole bunch of ag, so it wouldn't have been compatible. So, you know, I get what you're saying, but at what point does it have a higher level of scrutiny for it to go through the process? Because if code-wise, that designation, future land use designation on that piece of property allows for the type of townhome product, then it becomes a concept, you know, rear-load, spacing, setbacks, this, that, and the other.
Right.
To me, that would be allowed to go through the process, DRC, planning, all the way up to city council, you know, and make that determination through that process.
Well, staff does have some, some discretion in terms of what we would, we would be comfortable with recommending for a development. The concept that was presented to us was one concept, and it did not come close to meeting code and what we've come to expect a reaction from, from city council. We always say, you're welcome to submit, but staff can't recommend because it does not meet code, or it does not meet the consistency for the area.
So it's, so it becomes a recommendation issue versus it has to, it's a heavy fist to say you can't proceed further?
What staff does is say, we don't, we would not recommend approval. You're welcome to, you're welcome to submit. But most people don't recommend, or don't submit if they aren't going to get staff's recommendation. And if it doesn't meet code, it doesn't meet code. It's kind of hard to, you know, make a recommendation for something if it doesn't meet code in the first place.
And Mr. Becker, regarding the re-loading-
Can you get, sorry?
Just, and this is just informal conversations with people who looked at the property. Rear-loading is just, makes it economically unfeasible for a townhome project. It's because of the cost of building another road, so it's just numbers.
Yeah, I mean, that's where-
First of all, staff wouldn't support it, and they want rear-loading, so they go away.
Well, and that's where, that's where you lose me on that, that conversation, because, again, I'll respect the code in terms of the rear-loading that we have in the code, and if it's not economically feasible, that's, that's a U-issue, not like a, right? But, again, though, if you were to say, hey, I'm trying to do townhome product and they're rear-loaded per your code, and the only point of friction is the compatibility issue, that's where I think that, okay, let's shepherd it through the process, or you should be shepherd, allow it to be shepherded through the process to get another set of eyes on it, to make sure that everybody's aligned. But, you know, economics, I've never been one where it's, hey, if you're not making the type of profit that you need, that's really outside of my purview.
Well, that comes down to developers. They look that, don't have staff, it's going to cost more money, we're going to another site.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, yeah, just reading through the contract, the fact that we have a buffer to make sure there are no environmental issues, that's the big issue. I don't want a surprise, and we spent the people's money, and that's there, and it looks like that that's in order, as long as we don't miss the cutoff date and lose the $100,000 deposit. But all that looks in order. The one question I had, it's page 143 for us up here. "No soil borings or other invasive tests shall be conducted on the property without seller's prior written consent. Which consent may be withheld in seller's sole discretion?" So I just want to make sure we can test it to the degree that we need to, and I think that's semantics at this point, but it's, I just want that line clarified.
The seller has agreed to a extensive environmental study. First phase has been done. Second phase is underway. I don't have a timeframe for when it's going to be done, but they did some reconnaissance last week in preparation for coming in and, I assume, taking samples.
And if I'm reading it correctly, that's something that he is obligated to present to us, but has no warranty on that. We still have to get our own testing, but we use that kind of to begin. Is that correct? So we still, ourselves, need to test. I just want to make sure we have access to do it, so.
Right, it's going to depend on what we get back on the, their results of their tests, and then whether we want to then incur further tests as, as well in order to, to be, be certain.
I kind of liken it to the birding park. You know, we've got a small arsenic, what, a half an acre, an acre, that's, obviously, we're not doing anything with that, you know, we don't have a playground on top of it, so it's, it's not a problem. But here, if we're, you know, we're going to be utilizing it, it would, it'd need to be clean, or, you know, they cap it, which is the other way, you know, but if you've got a small area, let's say there was a chemical dump or a oil spill, you can cover it with cement and-
Right, there's, there's different things. I've negotiated these in the past, in the, excuse me, in the past. It was actually a park that, that was a land swap with the water management district, and the water management district neglected to tell us that there was a gattle-dipping vat right near where the playground was going to be built in this park. After four years of negotiations with DEP, we actually did, were able to identify the plume, the arsenic plume. The soil was removed, it was, it was treated, and then the, what, usually what the DEP will require is that you just have a restrictive covenant over the land that prohibits any type of groundwater wells, no wells, can't draw groundwater from there, and then other types of restrictions. But those are, those are matters that you would, if that were to be found. I mean, it does not make the park space completely unusable. The, this park is a, is readily available park, just subject to certain restrictions for the use of the property, mainly no wells to draw groundwater out of there. If there was never your intended use, then that's what you're going to be dealing with with DEP.
Well, that was the main thing for me. As long as we have that assurance that we can put the brakes on if, if something like that comes up, then I'm okay to proceed in this process.
Commissioner Smith, you?
Good. Okay, the, the only one thing I don't think was in the agreement, just want, for the record, for the Sumner family, is that they want to have, kind of neat, they've got, in the back piece of the property is a, is a small, not grove, but a 25 or 30 palm trees that the Sumners, which I'm sure was not legal back then, because it's not legal today, they brought seeds back from Israel.
A single seed.
A single seed. And so this single seed now is a 30 or so palm, palm trees there, and they want to name it the Sumner, which I think, you know, the history is kind of cool, that it was 50 or so, 60 years ago, that they, they made that trip to Israel. So I think that's something I'd like to, you know, if we're going to, I want to honor that, that if we, we end up, you know, purchasing property, I want to honor that, that kind of handshake agreement with the Sumner family, so.
Maybe that could work with our friendship agreement over there when I was able to go back in 2016, so.
Yeah.
Be something special.
Anyway. Okay. Any other questions? If not, anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? If not, we'll close the public hearing and look for a motion to authorize the purchase of the Sumner property located at 27 North Benyon Road.
Well, can we specify, this isn't to authorize the purchase, this is authorized the negotiation.
Negotiate.
Negotiate.
This is not a, we're not making a formal offer, we're basically looking at, we've got a purchase price, a requested price at this point. If they come back and say, no, we're not going to accept that, now we're in negotiations.
So it's, so, because your slide did say authorize the sale, but on the, the motion is really the request on the lead-in packet, right? Authorize staff to negotiate purchase and sale agreement with owners of the Sumner property?
This would authorize staff to actually present the contract to the property owners on behalf of the city.
Okay. If that's, if that's a motion, then some of-
Okay, we've got a motion by Commissioner Becker.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries namsly. Thank you, Michael. Thank you, Rick. All right, next up, ordinance number 2914.
Ordinance number 2914. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from T. Transitional District to MU KPI, Kelly Park Interchange District Mixed Use, and assigning Neighborhood and Transition Overlay Districts for certain real property located south of Onditch Road and east of Round Lake Road, comprising 205.07 acres, more or less, and owned by Kelly Park Land Investments LLC, Galvin Land Services LLC, and Harris KP LLC, providing for directions to the Community Development Director, Severability, Conflicts, and an Effective Date.
Phil? Good afternoon, Mayor and City Commissioners. Phil Martinez, Planner II with the City's Planning Division. The applicant is requesting a rezoning from Transitional District to Kelly Park Interchange District Mixed Use with a Neighborhood Overlay and a Transition Overlay, along with a Master Plan. The subject properties are highlighted in yellow and comprise of 205.07 acres. The surrounding area consists of residential and agricultural properties, along with Onditch Road to the north and Round Lake Road to the west. The properties are zoned Transitional District, and in accordance with the Kelly Park Interchange Form-Based Code, the applicant is requesting the MU KPI zoning. The subject properties also highlighted in yellow have mixed-use future land use, which is compatible with the proposed MU KPI zoning. The master plan depicts 670 single-family lots with 52-foot-wide front-loaded lots being depicted in yellow and 40-foot-wide rear-loaded lots being depicted in orange. In addition, areas for 300 future multifamily units are located at the southern ends of the development. The future multifamily parcels will require a master plan amendment. Access to the site is proposed off of Onditch Road to the north and West Kelly Park Road to the south. The master plan also depicts 10 future access points throughout the development. They are located in the double arrow symbols. The applicant has provided 40.81 acres of open space, where 39.83 acres are required. The open space includes two pools with restroom facilities and a trail network that is depicted in the orange segment, or orange segmented line, going from Kelly Park Road up to Onditch Road around the Central Park area, along with western segments going to the end of the development, and an eastern segment going to the end of the development. The Development Review Committee and Planning Commission recommend approval of the proposed change of zoning and master plan, and the recommended motion for this afternoon is to accept the first reading of ordinance number 2914 and hold it over for second reading and adoption. This concludes my presentation, and the applicant has a presentation as well.
Okay. Any questions for Phil?
Just, just one for me. The line that goes out to Effie Drive on the right side, Future Land Use map, is that an access line, or you see it right there, is that an access easement that's part of this? Or was that just a error?
What?
Yeah, see the yellow line that goes out to Effie Drive?
That is part of the, this parcel.
So it does have an easement over to there?
Uh.
I mean, I mean, an access point. I'm sorry.
This land area does go all the way out to Effie Drive within that narrow yellow segment. It is the same parcel as this rectangular-
It's just real narrow.
It's not an access drive yet.
Okay. But it allows for that in the future.
If it's combined with other property. It's not, it's not wide enough for an actual roadway yet.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions for Phil?
I have two.
Sure.
On, on the project summary, where it says five to 10 dwelling units per acre, then in parentheses, it says 15 with a density bonus, what does that mean?
So in the Kelly Park Form-Based Code, what, the applicant can attain a density bonus, which would allow for a maximum of 15 dwelling units per acre in the transition overlay, and they did that by dedicating the tract P16, tract P16 to be privately owned and maintained, but open to the public. And by doing that, one can attain a density bonus in the transition overlay.
On that matter, I know, Michael, we're, and Jim, we're looking to, to get rid of that-
Correct, yeah.
Density bonus. I don't, that's-
It, it's on the books right now. The next set of glitch amendments, we are going to be recommending removing that part of the density bonus, because if you have a consolidated development like this, it's kind of hard to say that it's open up to the general public, because somebody from this area is not going to go up there to utilize it. So it's, it's, it's more for their benefit than the general public.
All right, so they qualify for the density bonus. All right, then my second question is, on, on E. Drive, is that going to require road improvement?
I'm sorry, did you say Onditch Drive?
Yes.
There are turn lanes proposed on Onditch Road at the moment, and as far as transportation improvements, we'll, there are turn lanes proposed at the entrance, and we will-
Onditch is a county road, and the county's looked at this, but the reality is, most of the traffic's going to the south. So I don't really see that as a problem right now. It's definitely something that's on our radar, but, no, for right now, the turn lane should be sufficient. There's virtually no traffic on that road now, and if 95% of it, or even 80% of the traffic goes to the south, it doesn't trip anything that requires roadway widening.
All right. Okay. Any, any other questions for Phil?
Yeah, I mean, and to your point, Pam, I mean, on, in Orange County Road, but reality too, as if, on Onditch, hopefully, Orange County will put some lighting on that corner, that curve, because I remember the gentleman that used to come in here, and his name is escaping me right now, but he lives right on that curve, and it gets pretty dangerous. So the more traffic, the more opportunity for it to perpetuate.
When this project first came in, I told them, and not knowing them and not trusting them, I called Orange County myself and told them, you need to look at this project. I can't force them to do anything, but I'll call them again, and, and they may have, have had discussions that I'm not aware of, but I understand what you're saying, and it's a valid point.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay, come on forward.
[inaudible] Oops. Here we go. You have to use the arrows, and then this has, this one actually does both. We'll just use this. Okay. Thanks. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. For the record, my name's Allison McGillis. I'm with Paulson Bennett, here on behalf of the property owners. So staff did a great job outlining this presentation, so I'm going to go through this pretty quickly, so you don't have to hear the same thing twice. Property size is about 205 acres. It's within the Kelly Park Interchange Mixed Use Area. Future land use is mixed use. We're not requesting to change the future land use. We are requesting to- Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. For the record, my name's Allison McGillis. I'm with Polis and Bennett, here on behalf of the property owners. So staff did a great job outlining this presentation, so I'm going to go through this pretty quickly so you don't have to hear the same thing twice. Property size is about 205 acres. It's within the Kelly Park Interchange Mixed Use area. Future land use is mixed use, we're not requesting to change the future land use. We are requesting to change the zoning from Transitional District to the Mixed Use Kelly Park Interchange zoning. And then we're also requesting approval for our master plan. So in terms of a development program, we're proposing 670 multifamily units, mixed up 52-foot-wide front-loaded lots and 40-foot-wide rear-loaded lots. We have our main access point from Kelly Park Road to the south, with a secondary access point from On Ditch on the north, and then several cross-access points to the east, west, and south of the, to the adjacent properties. We are consistent with the Kelly Park Form-Based Code, and at the la, at the Planning Commission meeting, there was a request from a neighbor to provide a privacy fence on the western side, so we've agreed to do that, and providing a six-foot vinyl PVC fence along that boundary to buffer the adjacent properties. This project was really designed around our central amenity area, with the letter F on it, the central open space amenity. We do have pool and clubhouse areas. Within that amenity, the letters A and B represent those pool and clubhouse areas, and then several parks throughout the development, pocket parks and neighborhood parks. And then we have a trail system connecting Kelly Park Road through our development around our central amenity space to the north on On Ditch, and then also two connection points to the east and west. And I know there was a lot of discussion about our transportation, so I'm going to turn it over to Dan O'Keefe with Schutzen Bowen to kind, to explain our transportation improvements for the project.
Thank you, Allison. Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners, Dan O'Keefe with Schutzen Bowen, here on behalf of the applicant. And, and I think what you've seen here has evolved a lot. There's been a lot of meetings with your staff and stakeholders to, to come up with the, the plan that we have here today. This is, you know, one of the first in the, in the overlay, and we realize that there's a lot of projects coming in after, after this one. So we've been working with Pam Richmond and your staff on a development agreement that would address transportation issues, including the widening of Kelly Park Road, design, engineering, and construction, traffic signals to be constructed and linked along Kelly Park Road, as well as coordinating the impacts on the ultimate build-outs and improvements to Effie Road and Golden Gem Road, and sort of the whole, the whole region. So your staff's looking at this, not just with this one project that's coming in, but saying, wait a second, you guys are going to be part of this whole overlay and the vision that we have for this area, so let's make sure that on, on your transportation agreement, that we're, we're doing the right design, we're accommodating for future development, we're paying our proportionate share to, to fund those and actually get improvement started and constructed on the ground. So with that, we will, we will continue to work with your staff to finalize a development agreement to bring before you for your consideration, and it is our intention to have that development agreement presented to you concurrent with the second reading of this requested action today, should you approve it today. With that, we have Mohammed from Traffic Mobility Consultants, our traffic consultant. We have Allison and Lance Bennett from Polis and Bennett, our, our engineers and planners, and we're available to answer any questions that the commission may have.
The only last question I have, and maybe not for you all, maybe it's back to staff, because it's always in the forefront around school capacity and things like that. So the letter that was received on February is basically saying the puts and takes of the breakout of, the original Rochelle breakout of what the, the density and housing product type, even with those shifts, all of those reservations are not impacted by this rezoning step, meaning the capacity is there based off the previous future land use. Is that correct? Am I interpreting that letter correctly?
Correct, Mr. Commissioner Becker. OCPS basically said it's vested on the existing CEA that is out on the Rochelle Holdings property.
Okay.
So capacity is taken care of.
Mister will be the right title here. No, but thank you.
Any, any other questions for the applicant?
No, that was my, my question, because the letter says does not, does not exceed 478 students generated, so.
About me?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your question, sir.
Oh, I was saying, the letter I see from the school board says that this does not exceed the 478 students generated.
Yeah, it's based off of the formulas that OCPS has on their, their capacity reservation breakdowns. So they had looked it over and said that it, basically, there's an existing CEA on the property, that capacity is good for the rezoning standpoint, however, this has to go through concurrency. When development plans come in, they'll have to have concurrency taken care of, which is Florida law, prior to a plat being approved on the project.
All right. Okay, thank you. Okay, anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? With this zoning change proposal, I'm looking at what appears on the agenda, and that includes master plan. Forgive me for not being clear about, is it just a zoning change? Or does this include the residential development as well? What, what's, what's being proposed here? Is it just a zoning change, or is it more than that?
Yes. It's a first reading for zoning change and approval of the master plan itself. So next, the next meeting that this comes before City Council, once we get the development agreement, they'll, they'll be coming at the same time. It'll be basically the zoning approval and the development agreement at the same time.
Okay, okay, so the next time this is considered, is that the second reading?
For the zoning, yes. The master plan is being approved tonight, though. We have to have two readings for an ordinance.
Does the master plan consideration also take into account the, the residential development? That's my question.
Yes.
That's on the table right now?
Yes.
Okay, so, my question is this, my issue is this. I thought that was agreed some time ago by you, Mr. Mayor, that in the future, for the agendas that public has access to, that if there's a development plan with the acreage, there would be an indication of how many units. Am I right? I thought that that was going to be standard practice that was agreed upon, we're going back, I think, probably a couple of years. See, I don't see that here.
It's in the project summary, is that what you're speaking of?
Yeah. It, it's in there. Oh, you wanted on the, on the.
He wanted on the agenda.
Yeah, the agenda, not on the, not in the packet. The point, the point I'm trying to make is, I don't see that on the agenda, and I thought that some time ago it was agreed that that would be there. Because from the public, the layperson's standpoint, that's important. Sure. It all has to do with density and the trend lines. I think that's fair enough, do you?
Yeah, no, I, I agree.
Okay. I agree. We got a second reading for that, but we'll definitely need to put that on the second reading, the number of units. All right, Mr. Olson. School board.
Mayor Commissioners, Rod Olson, 3156 Rolling Hills Lane in Apopka. My concern is the aspect of trading, as I understand, allowing additional density, which our current plan allows for, to build that. Nobody is going to go to this in the middle of an apartment complex, and this needs to be addressed. Thank you.
I, I agree. We, it was already, yep, I couldn't agree with you more. Jim, how, how long before we'll have the next set of glitch amendments?
Planning Commission is actually next week, City Council is May 6th and May 20th, I believe it is.
So we'll, this will definitely be on that?
For the, for the, I'm, I'm sorry, I was talking to Phil.
For the, the bonus density?
Yes, yeah, that'll be, that'll be on there.
Okay.
Yep. I'm sorry.
Okay. Anybody else from the public wish to speak on this matter? All right, we're going to go back to council, look for a motion to approve ordinance number 2914 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption. Some move. Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2918.
Ordinance number 2918. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, to extend its territorial and municipal limits to annex pursuant to Florida Statute 171.044 the here-and-after described land situated and being in Orange County, Florida, owned by Wanda Sue McClarty, located west of Plymouth-Sorrento Road, south of Haas Road, and east of State Road 429, providing for directions to the city clerk, severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Jean?
Good afternoon, Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department. This is a request to accept ordinance number 2918, the annexation of 5708 Plymouth-Sorrento Road. Parcel is located west of Plymouth-Sorrento Road, east of State Road 429, and south of On Ditch Road, approximately 10 acres in size. The parcel abuts properties in the city jurisdiction on its western and southern boundaries. The recommended motion to, is to accept ordinance number 2918 and hold it over for second reading and adoption on May 4th, 2022. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Any questions for Jean on this? Okay, anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? I'm going to close the public hearing, but I just want, I know Jean has been working on our tree ordinance, our street tree ordinance, you know, and so she's, you know, reached out to University of Florida, I mean, some other, you know, kind of experts in that field of, of street trees that obviously won't pop our sidewalks like oaks are, are doing. So hopefully we'll have that in the next.
It'll be included in the glitch amendment.
Oh, okay, good, that's awesome. Yeah, so anyway, but, but great point, Commissioner Becker, that, yeah, we need to, the, the street trees we have in Piedmont Lakes have been a disaster, so we need to.
Also, what I wanted to address, and I, I think yesterday I did bring this up, regarding the fee schedules of the trees that are taken down by the developers. I understand that the last time we even had, that schedule even considered was back in 1992, and we're not in line with the neighboring cities. And, you know, one of the things that I constantly hear is that we are the city of trees, and yet when these developments come in, they kind of flatten the parcels that they, they buy, and then there's a mitigation for the trees they take down. But the fees that they pay for the trees they take down is not in line with other cities. I mean, we're, we're literally not charging enough for them taking those trees down. And so I understand that the last time we even did anything was in 1992. So how can we direct the staff so that, you know, we're, we're allowing them to take down so many trees? And that's something that I constantly hear from, you know, just the residents in our community, is that we are the city of trees, and we're allowing these developers to come in and just kind of level all these trees that we have, and a lot of them are really good trees.
Understood. Because I understand that Jim is actually, we talked briefly about it.
If we could discuss this at the, you know, at the comment section versus, versus the annexation, and then that way we want, you know, we can get a motion or something like that.
Okay. I just wanted to make that, yeah, because, only because she mentioned that she's trying to change the, the ordinances that we have about what trees we plant. And, you know, that is a concern, the oak trees, and you're right, Mayor. We are having a lot of discussions from residents in Piedmont Lakes over trees, you know, kind of destroying the sidewalks. Okay.
All right, we're going to close this public hearing, look for a motion to approve ordinance number 2918 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption. Some move. Got a motion by Commissioner Bankson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2919.
Ordinance number 2919. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, to extend its territorial and municipal limits to annex pursuant to Florida Statute 171.044 the here-and-after described land situated and being in Orange County, Florida, owned by David E. Beckel, located west of Plymouth-Sorrento Road, south of Haas Road, and east of State Road 429, providing for directions to the city clerk, severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
For the record, Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department. This is a request to accept ordinance number 2919, the annexation of 5706 Plymouth-Sorrento Road. Parcel is located east of State Road 429 and north adjacent of the Bridle Path subdivision, approximately 5.4 acres in size. Parcel abuts properties in the city jurisdiction on its southern and western boundaries. The recommended motion is to accept ordinance number 2919 and hold it over for second reading and adoption on May 4th, 2022. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Any questions for Jean? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve ordinance number 2919 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption. Some move. Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, ordinance number 2920.
Ordinance number 2920. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, to extend its territorial and municipal limits to annex pursuant to Florida Statute 171.044 the here-and-after described land situated and being in Orange County, Florida, owned by David E., David L. Beckel, located west of Plymouth-Sorrento Road, south of Haas Road, and east of State Road 429, providing for directions to the city clerk, severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
This is a request to accept ordinance number 2920, the annexation of 5704 Plymouth-Sorrento Road. The property, the property is located at 5704 Plymouth-Sorrento, Plymouth-Sorrento Road, west of, of that road and north adjacent of the Bridle Path subdivision, approximately, approximately 1.8 acres. The recommended motion is to accept ordinance, ordinance number 2920 and hold it over for second reading and adoption on May 4th, 2022. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Any questions for Jean? Anybody from the public wish to, anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve ordinance number 2920 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption. Some move. Got a motion by Commissioner Becker.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bankson. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, 2924.
Ordinance number 2924. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, granting the petition of G&amp;B Development Services LLC, establishing and naming the Kelly Park Community Development District pursuant to Chapter 190 Florida statutes describing the external boundaries, the functions and powers of the district, designating five persons to serve as the initial members of the District Board of Supervisors, providing a severability clause and an effective date.
Michael?
Good afternoon. The item for you is the ordinance to establish the Kelly Park Community Development District. This is similar to the last Community Development District, which we all, commonly known as CDDs. That was presented to you previously, I believe it was for the ridge. This would create a governing body, which will handle a lot of the operations and finances for the development. The advantages of a CDD, it's a statutory mechanism. These bodies, as statutory bodies, governing bodies are actually subject to sunshine. They are also authorized by statute to issue bonds to help pay for their infrastructure improvements. So this is the, the purpose of this ordinance is to allow for the establishment and creation of the CDD for the Kelly Park community. So it's not, there isn't anything novel or out of the ordinary with this. The, the mechanism, the, and the substantive aspects of the ordinance are similar to the last ones in regards to the ridge. So this is the first reading we have, so we recommend that we move this forward to second reading for adoption of the ordinance establishing the CDD for the Kelly Park community.
Any questions for Michael? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve ordinance number 2924 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption. Some move. Got a motion by Commissioner Bankson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, Resolution 2022-05.
Resolution 2022-05. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, setting forth the city's intent to extend the territorial, territorial limits of Oaks at Kelly Park Municipal Services Benefit Unit to include phases three, phase three, and to use the uniform ad valorem method of collection of a non-ad valorem assessment for properties lying within the Oaks at Kelly Park Street Lighting District. for properties lying within the Oaks at Kelly Park Street Lighting District in the city of Apopka, to fund street lighting services, facilities, programs, providing that a copy of this resolution shall be forwarded to the property appraiser, tax collector, and the Florida Department of Revenue in accordance with Section 197.3632, Part N3, Part N.A., Florida statutes, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Mayor, Council, Chuck Babrick, City Administration. What you have before you is extending a current MSBU that the city established previously. They are doing an additional phase four, and at this time we're requesting council approval to extend that particular MSBU.
Any questions for Chuck? Anybody from the public which should speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt resolution 2022-05.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, resolution 2022-06.
Resolution 2022-06, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, setting forth the city's intent to extend the territorial limits of Winding Meadows Municipal Services Benefits Unit to include, include phase three and to use the uniform not, uniform ad valorem method of collection of a non-ad valorem assessment for properties lying within the Oaks at Kelly Park Street Lighting District in the city of Apopka, to fund street lighting services, facilities, and programs, providing that a copy of this resolution shall be forwarded to the property appraiser, tax collector, and the Florida Department of Revenue in accordance with Section 197.36, Point 3632, Part N3, Part N.A., Florida statutes, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and an effective date.
Mayor, Council, Chuck Babrick, City Administration. For the record, this is extending the Winding Oaks, or excuse me, Winding Meadows, and I do see that I made a clerical error in the title, and I will make that scrutiny error correct, but you're extending the boundary of that particular MSBU to include phase three.
Any questions for Chuck? Anybody from the public which should speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve or adopt resolution 2022-06.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez, second by Commissioner Bankson. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, resolution 2022-07.
Resolution 2022-07, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, setting forth the city's intent to use the uniform ad valorem method of collection of a non-ad valorem assessment for properties lying within the Ivy Trail Street Lighting District in the city of Apopka, to fund street lighting services, facilities, and programs, providing that a copy of this resolution shall be forwarded to the property appraiser, tax collector, and the Florida Department of Revenue in accordance with Section 197.3632, Part N3, Part N.A., Florida statutes, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Mayor, Council, Chuck Babrick, City Administration. This is creating a, a street lighting district for a new development called Ivy Trail. Your staff request your approval to create that MSBU for the funding of street lighting.
Any questions for Chuck? Anybody from the public which should speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt resolution 2022-07.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bankson. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, resolution 2022-09.
Resolution 2022-09, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, setting forth the city's intent to use the uniform ad valorem method of collection of a non-ad valorem assessment for properties lying within the Magnolia Terrace Street Lighting District in the city of Apopka, to fund street lighting services, facilities, and programs, providing that a copy of this resolution shall be forwarded to the property appraiser, tax collector, and the Florida Department of Revenue in accordance with Section 197.36, Point 3632, Part N3, Part N.A., Florida statutes, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and for an effective date.
Mayor, City Council, Chuck Babrick, City Administration. This is for the creation of a street lighting district for the funding of street lighting in the Magnolia Terrace area.
Any questions for Chuck? Anybody from the public which should speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt resolution 2022-09.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, resolution 2022-10.
Resolution 2022-10, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, setting forth the city's intent to use the uniform ad valorem method of collection of a non-ad valorem assessment for properties lying within the Willow Run Street Lighting District in the city of Apopka, to fund street lighting, street lighting services, facilities, and programs, providing that a copy of this resolution shall be forwarded to the property appraiser, tax collector, and the Florida Department of Revenue in accordance with Section 197.36, Part N3, Part N.A., Florida statutes, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and for an effective date.
Mayor, City Council, Chuck Babrick, City Administration. This is a request to create the Willow Run Street Lighting Municipal Services Benefit Unit for the purposes of paying the street lighting bill.
Any questions for Chuck? Anybody from the public which should speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt resolution 2022-10.
So moved.
So, got a motion by Commissioner Becker?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bankson. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I know Chuck, once you, while we finished up on there, talk about, we're gonna try to wrap all these up. We're looking at.
Yeah, we're, we're actually, and I, I had mentioned to the council members previously, we're actually looking at creating here in the near future a citywide street lighting district, and we'll, we'll fold everything into one district, and we won't have all these separate ones. But we have to do a study, so I'm working on getting the final cost to do the study, and then we'll come back to you to create a, an overlay for the whole city. And we'll have to create all these.
All right. All right, next up, resolution 2022-14.
Resolution 2022-14, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, declaring the April 10th Florida Gopher Tortoise Day and providing an effective date.
Good afternoon. The item for you is resolution 2022-14, which basically proclaims April 10th as Florida Gopher Tortoise Day in the city of Apopka. The ordinance, the resolution is modeled after similar resolutions and proclamations that have been declared throughout the state of Florida, where, wherein April 10th has been designated as Gopher Tortoise Day. This time, staff recommends approval of the resolution declaring April 10th Gopher Tortoise Day in the city of Apopka.
Any questions for Michael?
The only addition from the ones that we had received from the resident last was that collaboration with the public and private entities. What was the insertion? What was the driver there?
Got that from other jurisdictions. It's just, again, this is a ceremonial resolution. So these are really more aspirational goals in which, when you have other corporation within the other entities in order to bring forth awareness, this resolution does not have the effect of law, does not have any regulatory or administrative authority over the city, but is merely a ceremonial proclamation declaring a day for Gopher Tortoise Day and bringing awareness.
And no, heavier weight on that. That whereas statement is vital for the conservation and long-term survival. So that's the spirit of that particular line, right? Declaring this April 10th, does this assume an annual, or is this for 2022 only?
It's ceremonial. I mean, it could be, it could be declared, and it's that, that, that day will be known hereforth as, as Gopher Tortoise Day.
Okay, any other questions for Michael? Okay. Anybody from the public which should want to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt.
I think.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I'm moving slow.
Okay.
Michelle Chase, Rock Springs Ridge, HOA. So as far, I guess I'm going along with what Becker was asking, because this has been brought forward to you by some of our residents, of course, because you know that we're going to be selling that parcel that has an easement on it. So I ask, when that petition or that application comes up here, what bearing is that going to have on that?
Well, we have no, we have no bearing with that conservation easement. So the city has no interest in that.
Okay, that's what I was asking, if the proclamation, you know, of Tortoise Day is gonna have any bearing on, it is our parcel, and it is our easement or the developers to remove. So just wanted to make sure that one doesn't affect the other.
Well, I think the purpose of, you know, a resolution or things like that, the spirit of a conservation easement in the writing in its current form is a state of perpetuity. And I would think that when the state agency that is looking at removing that or doing anything differently with it, if they look at their local municipalities and they see value in the preservation and protection of that species, that, that would bear some sort of weight in that decision-making process.
Right.
Michael, you wanna kind of weigh in on that one?
Local governments do not regulate in terms of these environmental regulations. It's going to be deferred to the state, and especially the way that the legislature conducts itself. Any type of overreaching on the part of the local government, we can expect a pretty hefty slap from the, from the legislature if we are to overreach into those areas. Again, this is a ceremonial proclamation. This would be like proclaiming, I don't know why the first name that came into my mind was Willie May's Day. Again, I don't, I mean, opening day is coming, so that's why it was in, in my head. So this does not have the effect of law. This does not affect any type of potential or hypothetical application to amend a, any type of conservation agreement anywhere. This is, we're hereby declaring it Gopher Tortoise Day, April 10th, and that's the, the effect.
Let me chime in real quick. I mean, I'm not gonna sit up here and waste time passing a resolution that I think is just ceremonial. It doesn't mean anything. I just, I'm, I'm going to approve a resolution because I think that there's value in protecting a species called the gopher tortoise. And I think, and that's why I made the, the comment that I did. I fully am aware that the city has no bearing in the decision of whether or not that conservation easement exists for perpetuity like, as it's stated, or it comes away and is done anything differently. That's not the purview of this board. But I will say that there's value there in having it there. And that's my opinion, and that's why I would support passing a resolution like this.
Understood.
Yeah.
Good afternoon again. I don't know if you remember. Oh, my name again? Okay. Sue Moore, 530 Sand Wedge Loop. I live in Rock Springs Ridge. And I brought this resolution proposal to the city council two weeks ago. So I am happy to hear that you are considering it for a resolution. I just also wanted to say that gopher tortoises have been protected in the state of Florida since 1975. So this is not something that's merely just a ceremonial thing. And students are taught this in school. When our development was put forth at the late 90s, in April 2002, they had to set aside this area, this 51 acres, the gopher tortoise area all across our neighborhood, to be able to build there because there is value in protecting the species because they are a keystone species, and 350 species require the burrows that the gopher tortoises make for their survival. There's a whole ecological system that go around the gopher tortoises. So it's more than just something ceremonial. It's actually living out and protecting our nature and not just doing something that doesn't mean anything. And I agree with Commissioner Becker that this is really important, that we realize that it is important. We need to start protecting our species and not just building over them or doing the pay-for-play that a lot of developments seem to get away with, and then just pave, pave over the gopher tortoises and have them suffocate underground so that we can put in more building. Thank you.
Thank you. So anybody else from the public wish? Rod Olson.
Mayor Commissioners, Rod Olson, 3156 Rolling Hills Lane. My number two granddaughter has six turtles that I build a pen for in the backyard, one of which is a gopher tortoise. We should support this. Thank you.
Oh, gosh, okay.
Michelle Chase, Rock Springs Ridge. I, I think that's great. And if you're going to do that, I would ask that the city find all the turtles in Apopka and notate where they, they are. We shouldn't just point out the ones that are on the 51 acres. There are also 68 on the 319 acres of land that we're trying to purchase, and they're all over Apopka. So if you're gonna have the day, I think you should recognize and place it on all homeowner parcels.
This isn't limited to the 51 acres. This is a citywide resolution.
Okay. Anybody else? We'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt resolution 2022-14.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, resolution 2022-15.
Resolution 2022-15, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, adopting the Language Access Plan for Limited English Proficiency Persons for the Community Development Block Grant COVID, CDBG-CV Program, and other federally funded grant programs.
Mayor and Council, the CDBG grant requires that the city adopt.
Name, name, give us your name.
I'm sorry, Dr. Jackson. The CDBG grant program requires that the city adopt a resolution that states that we will make sure that all of our documentation and advertisements are translated. So this is just a resolution abiding by that grant.
Okay, any questions for Dr. Jackson?
Well, here is another resolution, which is asking that we have the, any documents translated in Spanish. When will that start?
So this is for all advertisements and all documentation related to the CDBG grants and all of our other grants. So whenever we've made any advertisements, advertising regarding the grant, we have made sure that it was also in Spanish.
Okay.
And so when we start the whole application process, for instance, even with the housing project, this will apply. We'll make sure that we have it also translated.
And Michael, you can pretty well handle that.
Trying to think. I think I have, I have translated a couple of these applications or some of the language. So I am equipped to do it. I, so if, if we cannot find somebody in a pinch, I, I can do the translations.
And we also have staff, other staff, that have agreed to translate if.
Further, I mean, any legal document, or it's gonna be translated. I will still review it for legal proficiency, and that we have the proper legal, proper legal language in the document. And by legal language, I actually mean legal Spanish language in the document. I mean, there is, there is, there is a difference, practically speaking. Just like there's English and legalese, believe it or not, there is Spanish legalese as well. And I learned that the hard way. I was the one who, who wrote all the ballot questions in the Lucia County in Spanish. So, and I had to make sure that I met the legal requirements in Spanish. The legalities don't, don't disappear because the language changes. So any legal documents will still be run through the city attorney's office for review, both in English and Spanish.
All right. Any, any questions? Any other questions? Okay. Anybody from the public which should speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing and look for a motion to adopt resolution 2022-15.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Bankson?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, resolution 2022-16.
Resolution 2022-16, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2021, and ending September 30, 2022, providing for a budget amendment.
Vladimir Ortega, Finance Director for the City of Apopka. Resolution 2022-16, City Council Agenda, Agenda Item Reference in Today's Meeting Regarding the Emergency Designation and Ratification for the Fire Department's Purchase of a 2022 Ford F-250 Squad Vehicle. This purchase is to replace a 2013 Ford F-250 Squad Vehicle that is currently inoperable due to the engine failure. The total amount requested on the resolution 2022-16 is $48,085 plus a 10% contingency.
Any questions for Vladimir? Anybody from the public which should speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt resolution 2022-16.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, City Council reports. Commissioner Velazquez.
Well, I saw that you're going to speak on the Apopka serves, and of course, that, I participated in that along with my Kiwanis group, and of course, with the city. So I, I did enjoy participating in the two projects. enjoy participating in the two projects that we had. I had more fun at the Christian Highland Academy with the building, of course, my passion, building a park, although I didn't participate in the actual building, but to be there was a lot of fun.
Okay.
Commissioner-
Yeah, that was fun. We actually got to work on the railroad tracks right at Central and found some interesting things in the field there, but it was just great to see the community coming out together and really, you know, bringing up the curb value. I had one thing that I wanted to bring up, I'm sure others, I'm assuming, have gotten the question about this. Let me go back. This is from Karen Saddle, and it's concerning the Piedmont Park Homeowners Association.
Oh, I did have that, yeah.
And it just, it appears there, and she sent a letter that Jeff Weatherford, when he worked with us at the time, had given, I won't say assurances, but basically had said that the city will do A or B. Obviously, that never came before, as that I recall, so that's why I wanted to bring it up here. And if so, what do we do to address it? And I was told to talk with you, so I didn't know if we discuss it further here or I do that behind the scenes, but here you are.
Yeah, I know the D O and Paul were out at the site, so maybe you've got maybe some-
Right, we went out to the site.
Name and address, please.
My name is David Budo, I'm the Public Service Director. We went out to the site, we did an evaluation of the medium and also the roadwork. The next process that we are trying to do is come up with a cost estimate, and we will reach back with the homeowner resident and talk to them about the proposal.
And if I know Karen, she's probably watching right now, so.
Yeah, we, yeah, I told her they'd be back with her by the middle of next week, so we've got a-
So there is a process-
Right, I'm trying to get a proposal out, a cost estimate, and to determine how much it would cost. I'll have to come back and discuss with the mayor about the fundings, and then I will discuss with the homeowner.
And the question is, do we fix the problem, or do we fix the problem and resurface? I mean, the road's kind of marginal, the question is, do we do it all at one, which would make it nice and seamless, maybe jump starting a few other roads that maybe are in worse shape, but makes some logical sense to do it all at one time? So I think that's the challenge for the Public Services Department.
Right.
And I thought it was important because she did receive a letter from a city staff employee at the time, so, you know, I want to just make sure we follow through on that. Pictures there do show, yeah, obviously there's need, so we'll let the process go forward and-
Right, I'm working on a proposal.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Smith?
I wasn't able to participate in the city serve this past weekend, but I understand it was an outstanding project and very well received and appreciated by the community. But as a result of that, I did have one concern was, there was one to know the possibility of having speed bumps placed on Hawthorne near Alonzo Williams Park. There are evidence of individuals speeding on four-wheelers and motorcycles there, especially on the weekends and with kids playing in that area is a real concern, and so there was a concern about the possibility of placing speed bumps on that street, on Hawthorne near Alonzo Williams Park. And I know we have a speed bump program.
Now, on Hawthorne, we heard it was on 7th, not on Hawthorne.
He wants him on, Mr. Rutland?
Yes.
Yes, I had a very lovely conversation with him a couple days ago, and I agree with him, and we even laid out where we can, I want to put two speed bumps there.
Okay.
And we're also doing them up-
But wait a minute, you were saying Hawthorne, he was saying 7th, so which-
He wants them on, right there in front of his house, across the street from the Alonzo Williams Center.
Billy Dean Building, so-
Right, but they need to be both.
Between Hawthorne and-
No, 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 he's saying Hawthorne itself.
We can't put them on Hawthorne, the posted speed's too high.
Posted speed is too high?
It's 35.
But we can put them on 7th?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
And we're going to do that. I have talked to my partner at PD, Sergeant Harmon, and we'll be coming, the first meeting of May, to tell you about the ones that we want to do to make sure that you're okay with. There are three places we want to do them, the ones there and maybe the next block, and then the north-south road, Marvin C. Sanders. We're going to put one on each block from Michael Gladon North, because there's a problem there too. And so I wanted to come with Sergeant Harmon and tell you how much money we're going to spend and what we're going to spend it on. Yes, sir, that's on the top of my list, and I'm still chomping at the bit to do some stuff.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. The next one-
Let me, while we're on streets, I wanted to say, I know we still have $50,000 in the budget for, I call it the brick street facelift or uplift, whatever, so we still haven't spent that, so we're getting toward the end, you know, we're halfway through the budget year, so we want to make sure, you know, where we got the, not potholes, but we've got the real indentations on Central especially, and there's also some of the cross streets where it's the brick streets. We've got $50,000, so what we're going to try to do is every year we'll spend $50,000 lifting up the worst of the potholes, or not really potholes, but-
Sunken areas.
Yeah, leveling them out, so that's, I need to make sure D O and Paul, we don't, you know, it's, we're six months in, and, you know, it's only $50,000, but we figured we spend 50 every year, we'll get the worst of the worst and start to upgrade those brick streets.
And we are, we're going to be able to address that alley that's off of, off the A Street that comes out to Michael Marvin Sanders?
Yeah, we've got, D O's putting on his list there.
All right. Okay, and in doing public comment, it was mentioned in reference to assistance to Ukraine, and I don't know if legally, if the city can do something to assist.
I tell you, you know, my wife has been collecting, we collected some clothing and whatnot, and take it to the Ukrainian church, you know, which is right there on Lake McCoy Drive, and so I think that would be, I think, the best, you know, avenue to get things to, you know, those people in the Ukraine that need our help. I think there are certain things they don't want, so I need to probably get, let me get-
Get a list?
I'll get a list from her, you know, as to what they're really looking for. Matter of fact, I, you know, until this thing has been resolved, I'm wearing my Ukrainian watch just in, you know, memory of the folks that are serving there and-
So could we put that list on the city website?
Absolutely.
And ask our residents to support this effort?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, all right. And then lastly, I've been appointed to serve on the school superintendent search committee. There's 15 of us that are serving on the school superintendent. Dr. Jenkins is retiring in December, so we are starting a search for her replacement. We've had one meeting already as a committee, we've had seven meetings, one in each one of the districts. We met at Apopka School on last Thursday, and we was at Lake Nona on last night. There is a survey on the school board website where they're asking residents to go and take their survey, and that survey will close on 4:30 on Friday, so if you would go and do the survey between now and Friday and let us know what it is you would like to see in our next superintendent, what qualifications they should have, what obstacles that they need to confront, and what things that we have currently in place that we want to keep. So if you would go and take that survey, and it will close on Friday, then they will take all those comments, and then all the comments from the seven meetings that have taken place, and they will come back to the advisory committee, then we will sit down and look at those things, and then we will present to the school board the qualifications that we think we want to see in our next superintendent, and then that will be advertised for the job in May. So if you would do that, we appreciate it, and if you have anything you want to share, before I go back to committee meeting, my next committee meeting is on the 14th, so if you have any concerns, you can email or write those or call me, and so I can have those to share as well.
Oh, okay, so then I can, I can give you some of the concerns that have been shared with me already?
Yes, please.
Because the survey, I mean, it doesn't allow to kind of, if it would be, if I did the survey, it would be from my point of view, but I have received some concerns about the, without O C P S from other residents and actually from other organizations. Can I give that to you?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Cool, all right. Commissioner Becker?
Yeah, so while we were on the topic of glitch amendments before, and again, I'll thank staff, Jim helped out on this particular issue, but I don't want to have looming things as I transition out. So a neighbor of mine was trying to do a screen enclosure on the back of their property, and it had an aluminum roof, and there's other examples citywide, I mean, I'm sure there's a ton of people that have aluminum roofs within the city, but within our land development code, any rear features do not allow for that aluminum roofing. The reason provided by staff was more on the, on the side of what it could turn into long-term, you know, if someone tried to enclose it versus just truly having it as a screened porch, that was a concern, or footers may not be substantial enough to support the roof, and this, that, and the other. I would encourage staff, as we're looking at the glitch amendments, to bring forth to council an opportunity for that to be, to happen, because unless there's a safety concern or aesthetic concern that I'm not aware of, if we can build into the code the parameters around footers that are necessary or all those other requirements that would do it in a safe manner, I would just encourage staff to bring that forth to council during the glitch amendments.
Commissioner Becker, there are some HOAs that do and out allow aluminum roofs.
Yeah, ours do, like, there was no, yeah, there was no opposition from our HOA or surrounding neighbors, and that's, so I just wanted to have an opportunity for, if people, because some of those products, it's a nice product, and I don't think that people are doing it with ill intent to say, oh, in the future, I'm going to turn this into a real room, you know, I just want to afford that opportunity.
Yeah, so we get with Scott and-
That would be something that we could look into, you know, like, I'm thinking a lot of the rear setbacks are 20 feet or 25 feet, if they, if they went 10 feet into a required rear yard setback with a solid roof, as long as it's not, you know, across the whole back of the, you know, maybe 50% of the width of the house. I'm thinking along lines of what this customer had.
Yeah, and I'm trying to think of, you know, what's, you know, like, my own personal situation, right? When I built my pool in the back of my property, and my, my screen enclosure goes all the way up until that seven-and-a-half-foot easement, utility easement. This particular product was a seven-foot beyond the extension of the built-in lanai to the home, and aesthetically, it doesn't look like it's intruding into the yard much at all. When you walk the property, measure it out, it looks in line with all the other ones that exist in our neighborhood and the other ones that I've seen, so that's why I was, you know, unless there was some sort of safety or that sort of hazard, I just, I want to be able to provide an opportunity for people to put those nice things on the back of their home, because again, a lot of people might do things where they want the coverage from rain, but still enjoy the benefits of being in a screened, screened room.
Right, where you can actually get some wind circulation out there.
Oh, yeah, in this, in this heat, absolutely.
I've been thinking about that since, since we did the email exchange, so.
So I'm going to stay committed to my neighbor, and I'm going to bring this to a point where I can't take it any further, just so that I can look him in the eye every day as I pass by him. The other looming thing from last meeting, I had asked, in terms of my service on Lake Apopka Natural Gas District, not sure when the, I'm happy to serve in the April meeting, they typically occur on the fourth Mondays of every month, but I would like to give notification to them what our, what our go-forward is. I don't know if that's, you know, if you all want, plan on appoint my replacement in the next meeting or the meeting after, I'll just need to-
So when is the, when's the next?
The next, the next board meeting would be April 25th, so the day before swearing in.
Okay.
Happy to serve in that capacity, and then I'll let them know during that meeting, hey, there will be an appointment for the, for the next regularly scheduled.
If we want to, I just, probably just, what we do at the next council meeting versus we have to wait?
I mean, you can make the appointment if you, as long as you, the next council meeting's the 20th, you haven't given, you haven't actually formally-
I haven't told them one way or the other.
Right, so I don't, I don't want to jump ahead and actually appoint someone to a board where that board member hasn't actually formally resigned yet.
Okay, so get through the 25th, and then I'll let you know officially, and then you can do it the next council meeting after that.
At that point, yeah, I think it's, it's better that way.
Okay, awesome. Okay. All right, under the city administrator's report, I just, I guess what I'll do is just going to give you a kind of a, I hope he's not mad at me, but this is for Edwards, you know, for everybody to understand where Edwards at. So anyway, he had his surgery last Tuesday. Surgery went well, it was, I want to say 14 hours, started at 7:00 a.m. and was, I guess, in the recovery room at 9:00 something, so a really, you know, a pretty extensive surgery. He is, he's still on a respirator, although a less intrusive respirator. He's, he's on a feeding tube, making progress. He, from what I gather, walked two miles yesterday around the hospital floor, so he's doing well. Hopefully, he's thinking maybe tomorrow, the next day, he would get out. I think he, I think he'd rather wait until the trach is completely removed before coming home, because that's, that's a whole other set of challenges, so I think that's kind of his, his thought. He still doesn't really want visitors, you know, if you want to send him a note or something, that would be great, and then I'll let everybody know, including all the city employees, when he's home, that, hey, he's home, and, you know, we'll kind of, kind of play it by ear at that point, so, but his prayer, your prayers for him would be much appreciated, and he can't, he's itching to get home and itching to get back to work, and, but just keep him in your prayers. Michael, anything?
No report.
Okay. Under mayor's report, Kate, why don't you come forward, just, just real quick, I just want to, man, what a, tell you what, she, she takes on some pretty big challenges. We, I could, Kate, you sure you can do all this? And so, a couple of last-minute snags, she got me to cook for the volunteers before we got started, and before I could, before I could even get my spatula out, I had Will Carey and, and a couple of other guys out there, you know, taking over the spatula and cooking dogs, and, but it was a great event, and I just want to let her speak, but let me just kind of give you what, what was accomplished, and it's not just Sunday afternoon, but the days, well, days, you know, preceding, and also still, as we still finish up the playground, but single day of service, 163 volunteers, 1,015 service hours, 20,000 pounds of refuse picked up from the streets in Apopka, yard and street cleanup from Hawthorne to Alabama, 7th, 8th MA Board, and 6th to 6th, cross streets, including 5th, Michael Gladon, Washington, Luann Street, et cetera. The West Orange Trail cleanup, we had a veteran, veteran whose yard needed help, got cleaned up, boy, they had a whole dumpster full of stuff out of that house and yard. On Satan Street, Billy Dean Community Garden, we had a group out there cleaning up beds and getting ready to, you know, for planting there. 120 ferns that were potted at, over at the chamber, still more to go, got a bunch more over there to be planted, and as Commissioner Velazquez talked about, Highland Christian Academy, a bigger project than they thought, and still, hopefully it gets done, finished today, maybe?
Thursday, we think, we think Thursday, yeah.
And, and also a new flower bed there, so, I mean, just amazing community coming together to really, you know, to support those that were in need, and couldn't be more proud, and matter of fact, hopefully the chief will print, got a little thing I want to put in the chief, hopefully it'll be, get printed tomorrow about, you know, what Apopka means to me, and this is the kind of thing that I, you know, that makes me want, makes me proud of Apopka and the people that live here. So Kate, I don't know if you want to add, you know, anything to-
Yeah, you stole my report, but that's okay. That's okay. No, it was a collaboration with so many businesses and nonprofits, and, you know, we've been working on the planning of this for months. This is something that I did in the community that I was in before, that we called St. Joe Serve, and my friend flew out from home and came out and helped us because she knows how to help me with the recording of the hours and the sign-ins and things like that. We got you anyway, Diane, somebody signed you in for Kiwanis, I know you went directly after Kiwanis over to Heartland, so we were able to calculate everybody's hours so far, we, including the team that's still working, so I stopped with that. We will, the numbers will go up, and the reason there's a, something that you didn't mention, there's an economic impact that's recognized federally for this type of work when you do this many service hours as a community, especially revitalization and cleanup. So far, that is $29,282.75, so each hour per volunteer is valued at $28.85 per hour, and that's a pretty big deal, especially for a chamber that's fairly small and a community that's, you know, the fastest growing, however, you know- However, you know, we're growing the chamber, and we were able to do a lot of outreach that, you know, our, our chamber members are wonderful and ask us all the time, is there anything they can do? They want to have a service project, the AMI Kids Project, I actually forgot to put on this report, is fantastic, it's really amazing, and UPS and Fast Science did that one, and Coca-Cola, and, gosh, Publix, and, you know, of course, all the city workers. Mayor did get hustled into buying a bunch of hot dogs and grilling out for us, so that was very cool. I appreciate everybody for your participation, and we plan to do many more and launch a project out of that, that, that the Koch team helped with called Planting Apopka, Embracing Our Growing Roots. So stay tuned for that. We're going to make sure that we get all the businesses in town and organizations a plant and, and do a pledge. It's a partnership with Reimagine Community, she's on the board, and we're proud of that, and just anything we can do to have outreach to our members and to the community, whether you're members or not, we, we are here to connect, lead, and serve, so I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thanks.
Can I, I just mentioned also, which we didn't mention, was the month of March, we did Read Around Apopka, which is something also that the chamber and all the businesses that participated, and that was also very successful.
Yeah.
And for my part, you know, I, I know that I had sponsored the museum because it was so important to bring foot traffic into the museum, and, and it, it just really just snowballed from there, and so again, I, I'd also, want to give you credit also for that, and Shante-
Thank you. Yeah, Shante's initiative with the Read Around the City is just fantastic, and the chamber was proud to have those, you know, normally kids and families and grandparents, if they're not in the chamber, they may not ever come over there, so it was really cool to be able to have them come in, and that's part of our initiative with the Business Advisory Council and also the Arts and Entertainment Council, not only doing murals and cutouts and things that, you know, we're trying to put together funding for and get those launched, because I think we're pretty close to launching that. We don't have a ton of walls and stuff, but we have a ton of plazas, and people want to participate, so we're doing some cutouts to be able to get, you know, a scavenger hunt going and things like that, just like other communities do, whether they have murals or other, you know, landmarks, and so I appreciate the recognition. I was just a participant, you know, Shante came up with that for the second time, because she had a big one last year, and it was 2,000 students this year, and so it was, it was really cool, and again, if you guys, you know, every time I get feedback or, or something and figure out, you know, what are, what we're missing, and I try to connect and see what we can do to bring it, and I'm, I'm happy to do that, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, close the public hearing.